Good morning. This is the Weber County Commission meeting on this, the 27th day of July 2020. Well, we welcome you here. We welcome those of you who joined us live and we also welcome.
That's much better. We welcome those of you who have joined us live and those of you who have joined us virtually. Glad you've chosen to be with us today. We appreciate your attendance. This morning, we're honored to have our admin assistant, Shelley Halassee, lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Following Ms. Halassee, our invocation will be given by our fantastic civil attorney, Chris Crockett, and our thought of the day will be given by Commissioner Scott K. Jenkins. We'll go to that point. Ms. Halassee?
Please rise and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our kind Father in heaven, we bow our heads and offer up our thanks unto thee for all the many wonderful blessings that we have. We are grateful to live in such a wonderful country where we enjoy so many freedoms. We are grateful to live in such a wonderful county among such fine citizens. We ask, as we begin this commission meeting, that we may be able to find ways to serve the public to improve their lives. Father, we ask that thou please protect those in our country who are suffering from fires and floods and whatever other ailments that life is throwing at their way. Please be with them and please know that we are mindful of them and we are searching for ways to help them. We love thee so very much, dear heavenly Father, and we ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Oh, boy. You know, I gotta change chairs. This one loses its compression. All right. My thought today.
We go.
Has to do with.
24th of July.
You know, we just celebrated that and we were in the parade and we're involved in the excitement of it and, you know, I don't want to lose the excitement we have for our heritage and those that came before us and put us here and the good things they did by bringing us to this wonderful place. There was a special group in the pioneers that came over here and these are ones that they came across the plains and then they turned around and went back and they picked up a load of people who were immigrating and they came back again. And so they went across the plains three times. Now, a lot of those guys that did that did it because they were hoping to pick up a wife on the way. But I had a grandfather who was involved in that, who went across the plains three times, great-grandfather, not great-great-grandfather, anyway. And I think him often when I think of the 24th of July and what we celebrate and the fact that we celebrate those pioneers who came here and brought us to this great place and our progenitors. And so, anyway, that's my thought today. We should be grateful and I hope we don't forget the good things that they've brought us to.
Thank you.
You bet.
So you say they went back and got a wife or?
Many hoped to get a wife. Now, not all did, but they hoped to find a gal coming back.
I know this is a formal meeting, but our Culture, Parks and Recreation Director is here. Just wanted to welcome him. That was a great thought, Commissioner. Thank you. I don't know why I put those two things together.
Yeah, I was gonna say, did I miss something there?
Yeah, I hope he does. Okay. We have a public comment section for our agenda now. We ask that people, either online or in person, comment only on items pertaining to the action items or items number H, like hotel, on our agenda. Are there any online, Shelley? Seeing any in person? Okay, great. We'll move to item F on our agenda, Commissioners, which is a presentation. We're glad to have Ms. Jenny Taylor here with us today, who will give us a presentation on Weber Remembers, the 20th anniversary of 9/11. Johnny, welcome. Courtney, welcome. Glad to have you two here, the wingmen, so to speak.
Yep, it's gonna be a great morning. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for having us. We've got Johnny and Courtney representing the Sheriff's Office. Johnny's with Honeyville Inc. and joining our foundation in this great celebration. If I could turn your attention to the slides. What we're proposing and have been working on for several months now is a project we call Weber Remembers. You on the commission might remember several months ago when we were still meeting completely digitally, I joined one of your county meetings online to present this idea that Sheriff Arban and I had been working on, Weber Remembers, the 9/11 project. Let's see, hold on. One second.
I started to hear the little bit of audio, but it was pretty faint.
Yeah, he'll grab the audio. I'll explain this for a quick second. What we've got here is Mount Ben Lomond, you can see depicted with the Twin Towers. This fall is 20 years since the attacks of 9/11 in New York City, the Pentagon, and then, of course, the crash plane in Pennsylvania. And several months ago, at the beginning of this year, I made a phone call to Sheriff Arban and asked him if he knew of anything happening in our community to honor the police, the fire, the military, and the medical EMT communities that had served so well 20 years ago and then continue to serve in a different capacity, but on the same type of work in our community. At the time, Sheriff Arban didn't know of anything in particular and he and I said, well, we better change that because 20 years is a big deal and we want to make sure that we're giving the honor to the heritage, as Commissioner Jenkins spoke of, to remember the things and the people who have gone before us. So we came up with this project. We very intentionally have two colors on the word Weber because it is intended to be "we remember" and then, of course, "Weber, the county." So we've been working with the sheriff and the D C O, the public relations firm that the county uses, and kind of playing on that social media campaign of hashtag "we hike", whatever we do in Weber County. Well, in Weber County, "we remember." So I have a quick video to share with you and then Johnny and I will kind of give an overview of what this project is. It's a series of events taking place the week of September 11th culminating on September 11th itself. You have kind of an overview and we'll go into detail a little bit of what we're doing, if I can get the slideshow back, to help mark these 20 years. There we go. The intent, of course, is to honor offices like the Sheriff's Office, the different police departments, the fire departments, medical professionals, EMTs, those who have kept our country and our community safe for decades, particularly in this post-9/11 Johnny, if you want to explain a little bit of what this exhibit will be housed inside these two exhibit halls of the county fairgrounds.
Thank you. So what you have here, these are the two exhibit halls that we've reserved. You've got the one on the right, which is considered our exhibit hall for the exhibit itself, and the one on the left is our community hall, where in a second I can explain what it is we're doing. On the next side, you can see we've gone and mapped out the facility itself. As you look at the actual walkthrough, this is what we're creating. So what this is, is this is a representation of, we're going to take you back to what life was like before 9/11. So we want the experience to be, what was Weber like before 9/11? What were some of the things that we were doing? We've given every city, and we've got them presented to every city council, an opportunity to have a vision of this as well. I want to, let me skip ahead and then I'm going to come back to this map. What we're doing is we're creating this interactive experience and we're printing, since we don't have crushed fire trucks and collapsed buildings, what we do have is images and videos and that's something that we want to portray in this. What we've partnered with local businesses to create, these boards. These are four-foot by eight-foot boards that we can fully print, whatever high-definition graphics we want to on them. We got 304 of these ready to go and we're printing them in a walkthrough format on frames that are being built by the local community as well. To give you kind of this type of a vision of what these boards look like and how we want to present this, this is a walkthrough, interactive experience. One more slide forward and then we'll go back to that. This is a representation of what those boards would be. In one area of the exhibit, you're in the 9/11 afterwards, the call to action, and you can actually see, in this case, we have three boards here. One of them has some information about a topic that is pertaining to 9/11. This is how we would present that. So let me go back then, Jenny, if we can, back to the map. Every one of those little squares represents one of those boards. And those boards are our opportunity, as you walk through this with your family, with your community, you'd be able to see the pictures. Every one of the dark boards there is a TV. So there's actually video that is playing. We have 19 TVs set up that have different graphics and things that you'll see. As you walk through Weber County and then walk into Utah, there's the events that were going on in the 90s in Utah and then pop culture. What was, how were we dressed? Like, what was life like? What did we enjoy eating? What were our statistics around pop culture? As you come out of pop culture, then you walk into New York. We have a full-scale Manhattan Bridge that you'll walk underneath with a Statue of Liberty that stands 16 feet tall. And then behind it are two towers that go all the way to the top of those ceilings, which is almost 26 feet. And if you see, then over to the right, we've got, oh, sorry, to the left, we've got a room where you can sit and watch about what life was like in the 90s. There's a subway tunnel you walk into and in the subway tunnel, it goes, the whole facility is dark with spotlights on all of these boards. As you walk through the subway tunnel, you get the first sounds of 9/11 and the reports of the buildings and the news reports that were going on. You walk out of that and you walk into the chaos that was 9/11. From there, you walk into the events of Shanksville and of the Pentagon. So at the top, there is, we have, there were four people who survived the towers above where the planes hit. One of the towers, nobody did. On the south tower, there were four people. We have recorded one individual's experience as they walk out of that and come out of one corridor that was left undamaged from the planes. And so that will be playing in that. And then on the other facility where you see the dark seats out there, that's where people will sit and watch. There were three Utahns that were killed in 9/11, two on the plane, one in the Pentagon. We have their stories as well, which we'll be portraying and sharing there. As you come out of that, you get into the response area, which was the hunt for Bin Laden and the war on terror. There's many people who were affected by that. We have that section that we talk about. And finally, the main point, as you come out of this emotion, some of it you felt today as you started to see, as you watched these videos. Many of you remember exactly where you were when 9/11 happened. This call to action was that afterwards where you're like, you saw this tragedy and the horrors of the day and you said, I want to do something. I want to be better. I want to help my community. At the end of this, we have a call to action. We want to record in four rooms there. We have a booth where you can sit and record your own experience. And now the county, now we in Weber County have those recordings of people and their experiences. So 100 years from now, when our great-grandchildren pull it up and say, these were people who were there and around, this is what they experienced, we have that to be able to share for generations. So we're capturing that and then that will be archived. We're working closely with Weber State. They have their whole department on the history side and they've helped us to provide us with images and different things. In addition, the 9/11 memorial themselves have also provided information and pictures and things for us to realize. And as you come out of that, then it comes into the community event center. And I'll let Jenny talk on that. Any questions around the exhibit itself while I'm up?
Thank you.
All right. So like Johnny said, at the event itself, we will give people an opportunity to record their memories. And leading up to the event, we have been recording people's memories. It's been a really awesome opportunity. We've had the sheriff and some of his staff. We've had congressmen, some state senators, military members, moms and dads, regular everyday people, all the way up to an army general, who have come in and we've recorded up at Weber State with some of their students, capturing these memories. What we'll do is use some of those videos that we've created and those memories shared on social media to help build awareness and remind people of this 20th commemoration. But also, we'll use it at the exhibit. As Johnny said, there's several televisions throughout and some of, one of the televisions will show kind of a loop of all of these different experiences where, whether you were just at home that day or working in the Pentagon or maybe out in the field doing yard work, you know right where you were. We've been working with the Ogden and Weber School districts and also their corresponding foundations to arrange for schoolchildren to come to these exhibits during Thursday and Friday, September 9th and 10th. During daytime hours, we'll have field trips and opportunities for these schools, other charter groups and homeschool groups, to come and really experience something they didn't live through. Our children and grandchildren now weren't alive at that time and so they'll be able to come in and it's more than just a picture, it's more than just a video on YouTube. It really is an interactive timeline. It's an experience that they will hear, they will feel, they will see, and we hope that it becomes an educational opportunity they won't forget. We're partnering with the fire departments throughout the county, led by Jake Rast in Roy City, and he's helping us coordinate with the different chiefs for a sunrise service that morning on September 11th, which is Saturday this year. They'll have a special fireman's sunrise service and ceremony. They've done this every year for about a decade. We'll now be bringing the county in to have more people know that this happens. They hold the sunrise service at the exact minute the first tower was hit. We're also partnering with the Fire Ride. I'm not sure if any of you Commissioners are familiar with this, but every year for September 11th, between 700 and 1,000 motorcyclers and firefighters ride their bikes from Salt Lake City right up to our own Ogden Amphitheater. They have a beautiful ceremony at noon where they honor not only those who perished on 9/11, but every single firefighter in any capacity across this country who died in the previous year. So this year, because of the pandemic last year, our firefighters in Ogden City will be honoring 167 fallen firefighters from around the country. And that will take place right here in Weber County, right next to the firefighters memorial. I'm not sure how many residents in our county are aware that that memorial is there. It is beautiful, it is powerful, and it is national. It is not an Ogden wall, it's not a Weber County wall, it's not even a Utah wall. It has on the wall the names of every fallen firefighter in this country from the late 1800s and we want to help bring awareness to that. The firefighting community is well aware it's there. The motorcycle riders, they're well aware this event happens because they love to jump on their bikes. But we want residents throughout the community to know, to maybe bring their children to come participate, to pay reverence and honor to those who have died while protecting us. We've also got great plans for entertainment from local groups. We'll have some big headliners and we'll also have local choirs and music groups from throughout the county. So during the day, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, we'll have these performances set up and we'll have a schedule and it will all be free of charge. People will be able to come, as Johnny said, go through that museum experience and then in the adjacent exhibit hall, it will be a community experience. Outside, we will have the food trucks that, of course, always draw a good crowd and an exhibit that some people refer to as a touch a truck, a fire truck, an ambulance, a police car, military vehicles, personnel. Most of us don't interact with law enforcement or fire unless we're in trouble. We usually call for help when we need something or they pull us over when maybe we didn't do something right. This is an opportunity for young and old to interact with firefighters, military members, police officers, medical professionals who have carried us through this pandemic. Maybe they can try on the firefighter's hat and take a picture. Maybe they can climb into the truck and get a feel for what that is to be a public servant and a member of the public safety community. Inside, now, these are some of the partners that we have, including the county, the different cities. We've been working with our federal delegation, the Utah Department of Veteran and Military Affairs, Attorney General Sean Reyes, members of Utah's House and Senate, the Tunnel to Towers Organization out of Manhattan. They've been very generous in sharing some of their resources and guiding us. They live and operate right where ground zero is and they know exactly what this day means and they've helped guide us, like Johnny said, to bring a piece of New York home to Utah. This year, in addition to being the 20th anniversary of 9/11, is the 125th anniversary of Utah's statehood. And so we're working with the State Department on Utah Thrive 125 to celebrate our statehood and Johnny highlighted that area that will show Utah's great heritage. Ramp has been generous in providing a grant for the children's educational portion of this exhibit. We're working with the Governor's Office of Economic Development and Go Utah, which, of course, is a tourist organization. We're really excited to once again put Ogden on the map, to put Weber County on the map. A lot of these events tend to take place in cities like Salt Lake or down in Sandy where they have the healing field, but this is a chance for Weber County to come together and invite the entire state to show how we do things right. Inside that second building where the performances will be taking place, we've also partnered with several different exhibitors who will come and be able to set up a booth, service organizations. So that as Johnny said, as you've had this emotional experience and you just want to do something and you want to know how to help and you feel inspired to make a difference in your community, we'll have groups that are ready to tell you how you can make a difference right here in our community. Opportunities to learn where you can sign up for service organizations or find a need right here in our own neighborhoods. Sometimes we feel like we need to go to the backwoods of Africa to make a difference when really right here at home, there are a lot of needs. And these are organizations that are always willing to help us, help each other. So that's kind of an overview of the events. They'll start Thursday and Friday with schoolchildren during the day, open to the public in the evening, open to the public all day Saturday. Music, food trucks, touch a truck, different components to bring people in to be able to have that experience of remembering by fully experiencing and then committing to make a difference. Johnny?
So I think for us, one of the things that, obviously, this is something that's big and we have a lot of people who have volunteered to be a part of it. For myself, coming from the business community, anytime we talk about this, everyone's willing to participate and wants to be an active participant in this. So we do have a budget. We are trying to achieve a certain amount of fundraising and part of that, we're going to achieve through sponsorships. The sponsorships are important to us in that we can portray the support that we have from both business and then local community and others who want to be a part of it. So sponsorships will be presented through, we have opportunities to be on T-shirts and to be on logos and to be actually in part of the exhibit, having your "Hey Sponsored By" moments you can see there. You can see somebody, if a business wants to participate, we have a logo that we can put out there too. So that's going to help us to achieve the fundraising goals that we need. And I think the ask right now for us in presentation, this is like not just for you And I think the ask right now for us in presentation, this is like not just for you commissioners, but for the audience as well. Many of you see this, whenever we present this, we have people come up to us, what can I do to help out? I want to be a part of this. And as you have individuals or people that you know who have talent, look, I'm a food manufacturer. I don't, I've never done an event or an exhibit like this before. And, but I feel something here, I want to be a part of it, and I can see there's a bigger vision for this. And therefore, many of you might feel the same, if you know somebody who has participated or could help us out, have them reach out to us. We have a Facebook page, a website, and we're active on social media at this time. We're in a campaign now where we've kind of quietly put this together. We're in the mode of what we call rumbling about the things that are going on. Some of you have seen maybe some of the social media posts. Over the next four weeks leading up to 9/11, you'll see the roar part where we're just getting the word out and letting people know, and more and more people will want to be a part of this. Send them our way, direct them to our website, have them connect with Jenny and I. That's the, that's our goal, is to get as many people to participate as possible, so.
And then we do have one specific ask for the county, and it's the same ask we've had for all the cities, and I believe this might have been in the email, if not, we'll make sure you get it. We've asked each city to give us three photos that represent their city, their heritage, maybe an iconic building or landmark in that city, along with the city logo, and then a sentence or two or three about what makes that city so unique. Now, you, as the commissioners, represent a large portion of Weber County's unincorporated areas, and we would hate for that to be left out. So we'd love to be able to include some photos of the unincorporated areas of Weber County, and maybe Shelley and we can coordinate on that, and then of course, including the county logo, and a couple of sentences maybe about what Weber County is as a whole, and then of course, making sure we're including those unincorporated areas that don't belong to an organized city. And then we're really grateful to have the sheriff's office here and working with us to make sure we've got the right safety and security. He's offered his deputies, as well as the VIPS, the volunteers in police service, to make sure we have kind of the crowd control and things, things of that nature, and we're working with the Golden Spike Arena, and we'd appreciate your support with any of, perhaps either reduction or waiver of any of the fees associated with some of the use of county facilities so that we can host this event. And once again, just put Weber County on the map. You know, we've been down to the Capitol Building, we've met with Senator Romney, we've met with Congressman Moore, all over the map, everywhere we're talking, and they say, this is bigger than Weber, this is a Utah thing. I said, no, this is, this is a Weber County event that's inviting the rest of Utah, but Weber County is the one who knows how to make this happen. And so we open any questions? I don't know, Courtney, if you had anything to share on behalf of the sheriff?
Yeah, just real quick.
Thank you.
Sheriff Arbonne's on a family vacation, so he asked me to represent him here today, but he just wanted to first thank Jenny and everybody for their hard work and what this represents for Weber County, but also would like to invite you guys to support this, and the sheriff's office is 100% behind it, and we think it's going to be a great thing, so, thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Commissioners, questions for Jenny or Johnny or Courtney? Commissioner Farrar?
No question, just a comment. Johnny, Jenny, appreciate, and Sheriff's Department, obviously. Jenny made me aware of this with Sheriff Arbonne several months ago.
It was early on, sir.
And I thought it was a great idea then, it appears to be even a better idea now. Thanks for putting in this hard work. You know, as I look back through my lifetime, two events stand out that I think only a couple in this room probably remember, and that was the assassination of John Kennedy. The second was 9/11, which, as we, it's hard to believe it's 20 years has gone by, but as you said, there's a group out there in our county, our state, our country, that never experienced that, and this, in my opinion, will give those young people the ability and reminder to all of us what impact that day had on our lives. And so again, I just, I think this is a fantastic project, anything that we can do as a county to help promote it, I would say we're more than willing to do that. You guys have put in the hard work, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrar, and thanks for taking that phone call from me and Sheriff Arbonne. I believe it was January, it was early on.
January, okay.
And we never would have been able to do it without your support and helping us to get in with the other cities and the fire and police community, so thank you.
And it's great to see Brent's name on that foundation, by the way.
It is, thank you, sir.
Any comments, Commissioner Jenkins?
I just congratulate you and your efforts. I'm excited about this, and this is good, way good.
Thank you so much.
For me, I think the thing would be thank you. Thank you for caring enough to do, not just say. That's wonderful. Appreciate your presentation today, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, commissioners, we're going to move on on our agenda. To item F number two, this is a presentation of the Ogden Weaver Technical College 50th Anniversary. A presenter today will be President Jim Taggart from the Ogden Weaver Technical College regarding a scholarship. President Taggart, that's for Richard Weston Tidwell, who's with us today.
Thank you Chair Harvey, Commissioner Jenkins, Commissioner Farrar. With me, I have Bryn Murdoch, the college's development director. It's always a good day to be able to come before the commission and talk about Ogden Weaver Tech, it's even a better day to follow Jenny Taylor. Jenny and I have been on the same agenda for now, this is our third time that we've been on the agenda for two different cities and the county commission. I've seen this presentation multiple times, and it is exciting every time I see it. What Johnny said is true. When we finished our presentations together at South Ogden with their city council, I pulled Johnny aside and said, how can Ogden Weaver Tech help? So our youth building construction students want to build those frames, and I know that we can do it better than anyone else. Something else that Jenny said before I start my presentation, is she said something that rings true. She says, we want the state to know, Weber does it the right way. And that's true about our community. And I'm so fortunate to be able to be the president of the very best tech college because it's in the very best community in the state of Utah. So our presentation. There we go. So this year, the college is celebrating its 50th anniversary. The college started in 1971 when a group of community leaders said, we have employers that need employees with skills, we have individuals that are unemployed that need skills, we need to do something. So it was the community that started, the Utah Skill Center North. In April of 1971, we had 93 students in the old Madison Elementary School. Over the next 50 years, the location has changed multiple times. The name of the college has changed six times. But one thing that hasn't changed is the commitment to make sure the individuals in our community have the technical skills to impact employers in our community. We build prosperity by making sure we have a technically skilled workforce. I want to pause here and just take a moment to recognize the influence of Brent Wallace on the success of Ogden Weaver Technical College. Brent was our very first president. Actually, he had multiple titles. He started as a director, he was a superintendent, and then he was the first president. He fostered this organization for the first 36 years of its existence. Without Brent Wallace, who passed away 10 days ago, without Brent Wallace, we wouldn't have an Ogden Weaver Technical College today. In 1985, we moved out to our campus out on Second Street. We have 110 acres there, it's a beautiful campus. We also have a satellite campus in the heart of the Business Depot Ogden, and it's wonderful to have that facility where we are surrounded by employers and we can serve them each and every day. The college's mission is very, very simple. Our goal is to make sure that employers in Weber County have a technically trained workforce. So all of our programs align with the needs and emerging needs in Weber County. I can't have a program with high student demand and there are no jobs. If there are jobs, we're going to create a program to fill that need. So we focus on manufacturing, construction, IT, business, service. One of the things you need to know about your technical college is we are the largest provider of apprenticeship training in the state of Utah. Larger than any of the other community colleges or universities. Last year, we served 1,339 apprentices. One in five of our students is an apprenticeship student. So Commissioner Jenkins, you know I'm going to give you this number. 10 years ago, we had 39 plumbing apprentices.
There you go.
Any guesses how many plumbing apprentices we served last year?
I hope 390.
138. We're close to that, we'll move on to that 300. Our problem now is we're out of space, and we now have a waiting list for plumbing and electrical apprentices. Many people say, great, you know, the tech college is a great place to go if you can't get into a university and you can't hack it, or if you just, you need to get a skill so you can get a job. Those things are not completely true. Let me share with you a letter that we, an email we received from one of our plumbing and HVAC contractors thanking us for sending one of our apprentices to them. This individual let us know that they're starting at $80,000 a year as a plumbing apprentice. By year two, he'll be between 100 and 120,000. They point out that the HVAC technicians start at 120,000, and by year two, he or she will be at 150,000. The last line of that email scares me. It says, we also launched in Boise, if someone's willing to relocate, we'll help them with that. It's one of the biggest challenges we have in our community, we do it the right way, we're exporting our talent. I don't want any of our graduates to go to Boise. That doesn't help build prosperity in our community. All of our students graduate debt-free. We have scholarships, we have Pell Grants, our tuition is extremely low, no one graduates with student loan debt. That means that when they're earning money, they're spending it in our community. High school students attend tuition-free. Last year, that saved parents $750,000 in tuition. We are one of the most diverse institutions of higher education in the state of Utah. 35% of our students are students of color, our Hispanic Latino students are 28%, and we're leading the way in closing the gap. Many students of color graduated at a lower rate than non-students of color. Our high school students who are Latinx graduated at a higher rate, and we've worked really hard to close the gap for our Latinx students that are adults. They now graduate at the same rate as our non-students of color. All of our graduates are working in high-tech jobs in Weber County in northern Utah. Many of you have sat in with companies that want to expand in Weber County or relocate to Weber County. They ask a few questions about water and infrastructure, but their number one question is workforce, workforce, workforce. We're honored to be a big key to that solution for the challenge of workforce in developing a highly skilled workforce in Weber County. Last year, our graduates in their first year generated $80 million in salaries. We serve about 6,000 students a year. That's a very good return on investment. Each of you had an impact on the technical college's success before you were ever on the commission. Many of you, two of you, served in the legislature. Our graduates pay back the total cost of running the tech college in seven years. That includes everything, including those students that don't graduate. That's a great return on investment. They're going to be working for an additional 23 years, that's just money that helps the state of Utah and our communities. We have great stackable credentials with our university partners, and President Mortensen and I are working on expanding even more of those, so that every student that completes a certificate at the tech college has a very easy opportunity to enroll at Weber State and complete additional training there. You've seen this symbol before, with nine major railroads coming into Ogden, the statement was you can't get anywhere without going through Ogden. You couldn't get from the west coast to the east coast or back without going through Ogden. We feel the very same way about Ogden Weaver Tech College. We are the very, very best way for students who are in high school to get technical training. Working with Ogden School District, they have found that if a student attends Ogden Weaver Tech, they're more likely to graduate on time. And we feel that we are the very best way for an individual who wants an associate or bachelor's degree, start with that tech certificate first. There are so many employers in our community that will pay for the rest of your education. Get a job and have your employer pay for the rest of your degrees. We've kind of flipped. Back when I went to school, you went to college to get a job. Now you get a job, and they send you to college. So where do we go in the next 50 years? This is a picture of a 56-year-old veteran who completed our non-destructive inspection program. One of the things that he said to me is, a lot of people wonder what technical education is. We've called it vocational education, we've called it occupational education. He says, I'll tell you what technical education is, it's advanced education. If you want an advanced education, you go to the tech college. So when I saw him at our graduation, I had to hoot and holler a little bit. One of the areas that we are working on is that we have an estimated 18,000 adults in Weber County who do not have a high school diploma. These individuals dropped out, and they don't have a high school diploma. That inhibits their ability to earn, and many of them are working. So we're going to be working with Weber Adult Ed in a pilot project for the state of Utah, where individuals will complete a tech college certificate and at the same time earn a high school diploma. That's going to make a difference in our community because we need them in a higher tech workforce. And then again, we're going to continue to work with Weber State to make sure we have this seamless transition to associate degrees and bachelor's degrees. We do that in our nursing program. Students complete our practical nursing program, they go right into a Weber State nursing program on our campus. The only thing that changes is they have Weber State instructors, they use the same facilities. We want to do more of that with our other programs. So to thank the county for 50 years of wonderful support, we want to award a scholarship to a resident of Weber County or to an employer dependent of the awesome employees of Weber County. Bryn?
Thank you. Yes, so again, we just want to thank Weber County for your support and partnership. All the accolades that President Taggart talked about wouldn't be possible without such great local support. Our college and foundation are honoring and celebrating our 50 years of service by reinvesting in our, in our community with a 50th anniversary community scholarship. And this is a two-year, or sorry, not a two-year, a full tuition scholarship. Most of our programs you can get done before two years, but a full tuition scholarship to attend any of the tech college's programs. And so we are so excited to award this to Richard Weston Tidwell, if you want to come up. And so we have all this information for him and are so excited for the great things that he will be able to do as he furthers his education here at Ogden Weaver Technical College. And so I don't know, President, if you want to say anything?
Any questions? I do need to recognize in the back of the room, holding the wall up, distinguished alum Daniel Wade, who works in our wonderful elections office, is a graduate of Ogden Weaver Tech.
Great, congratulations. So is this guy in the plumbing program?
You want to be a plumber? They make a lot of money.
That's right.
Electrical's fine too, we need electrical.
We'd like to, before you sit down, let's, we'd like to get a picture with you, if you could, please. Commissioner Farrar, Commissioner Jenkins?
I think we'll just, do you want us just to stand in front of them?
Three, one, two, three.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Commissioners, this wonderful day with these two presentations, any final thoughts before we move on to our consent items?
Good day.
Then we will. Commissioner Farrar, you have any thoughts?
I just want to thank President Taggart, brought up the name of Brent Wallace. I actually worked with Brent for the two years in the legislature, great man. He talked often about the technical college and the work that he did. He reminded me of all the community efforts that went into locating your existing site, and how fortunate it was we have community members that got behind the future, and we're seeing, reaping the benefit of that today, as President Taggart, as you probably know, sits on our northern Utah as you probably know, sits on our northern Utah Economic Alliance Board. And without the Weber State and the technical college bringing forth the workforce that we need, any of this economic development that we are right in the middle of wouldn't happen because we don't have the workforce. So again, it's such a great relationship that we see between Weber State and the tech college that escalates us above everybody else in the state. So again, appreciate your work, President.
Thank you, Commissioner. I also would like to comment here. I appreciate you bringing up Brent Wallace. Wonderful, 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 wonderful guy. I absolutely loved working with him. Just think the world of him, and so thank you for that.
I think before we move on, most people did know Brent. He made a wonderful impression and an imprint, creating the foundation really for what we have today. But I also want to underscore the greatness of you, President Taggart. I've known James Royal Taggart since he was a brand-new baby boy, and he grew up five houses away. And he...
You're old.
Wow, I didn't know you got it. That surprises me. Yes, yes, I am old. But I'm far and away the youngest on this commission. Let's just make sure that's understood since we're recorded. But President, I've had the opportunity in my lifetime to work, as you know, very closely in a variety of different circumstances, and I have the utmost respect for you personally and individually, but also I, I don't watch with wonder, but I watch with gratitude how you've taken the skills you've learned from people like Brent Wallace, but also your father, Jay, and, and put those into a wonderful program and going on the road, so to speak, and doing these tours, and you're just doing wonderful things there, and I'm just so grateful how you're contributing to this area that I love so much, and thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Okay, Commissioners, we're going to move on to our, to our consent items, item G, like golf. Again, appreciate you joining us, you presenters. Item number one, Commissioners, is a request for approval of warrants number forty-one thirty-three and including forty-one seventy-one and four-six-zero-four-twenty-seven through and including four-six-zero-six-fifty-three in the amount of one million eight hundred forty-seven, four hundred eighty-seven, eight hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Item two, Commissioners, is a request for approval of purchase orders. Those, that amount is one hundred fifty thousand, eighty-two dollars and eight cents. Item three is a request for approval of new business licenses. Item four is a request for approval of a new beer license. And item five is a request for approval of contracts binding between Weber County and the following individuals for the twenty-twenty-one Weber County Fair. Kerry Byington, who's the annual, who's the announcer for the Fiesta Four-H Horse Show. Caitlin Wilkinson, who's the secretary for the draft show. Fremont High's National Honor Society, that they're, they're going to do the table washing for us this year. Tucker Waite, who's the Pee-wee goat judge. And those are the items. Commissioners, any questions on any of the consent items? Questions or comments?
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Commissioner Jenkins.
This is for Jason. The last item on your purchase orders was abstract masonry restoration at the library. Is this for some graffiti that we've received recently, or does this have to do with the...
Earthquake damage.
Yeah, earthquake damage that we had.
My understanding is that's recent graffiti and then preventative or...
Okay.
Sure, it went out to bits.
Yeah, I have no problems with that. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Farrar?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Hatch, our great clerk auditor, nationally recognized. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We issued sixteen purchase orders this week for a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Sixty-five percent of that amount, or ninety-eight thousand dollars, is for the Health Department to purchase flu vaccines. Yes, that season is coming up. Thirteen percent, or nineteen thousand dollars, is for the library, and that is for the mitigation, correction and mitigation of graffiti primarily is, is what that PO is for. Twelve percent, or seventeen thousand dollars, is for the transfer station, which will purchase fuel as well as diesel repairs. As far as issue, warrants, we issued two hundred sixty-nine for about one-point-eight million dollars. Twenty, or nineteen percent of that amount, or three hundred forty-six thousand dollars, was for the jail, which was primarily our nursing services, but also some counseling, inmate counseling and food. And then twelve percent, or twenty, two hundred twenty thousand dollars, is the paramedic services that the county provides. Nine percent, or one hundred sixty-one thousand dollars, is housing payments to Weber Housing Authority, or on behalf of the Weber Housing Authority. And then eight percent, or one hundred forty-two thousand dollars, are ramp awards. Six percent, we had two amounts, about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. One was to public defenders, and then the second was for our roads department, which was primarily for storm drain, drain construction as well as purchasing asphalt. And then we had two items at five percent, or ninety-three thousand dollars. One is corridor preservation, the purchase of land at Skyline Drive in Pleasant View. And then, then other ninety-two thousand dollars was cash, which is for the county fair operations, so they have change.
Very good. Thank you very much. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Hatch or that have arisen because of Mr. Hatch's presentation? None being heard, I'll entertain a motion for the consent items.
Make a motion that we approve consent items G one through five.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Call for that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Our first item in our action, which is under item H, is, will be for our fair manager, Ashton Wilson. It's a request for approval of a contract, contract binding between Weber County and Scales and Tails, the Utah Reptile Exhibits, for the twenty-twenty-one Weber County Fair. Ms. Wilson?
Yes, sir. Good morning. Thanks for having me. This is going to be new to the fair. It's an attraction and entertainment, so they'll have a static display, they'll have an alligator that the kids can feed, and then they'll also do three shows a day, thirty to forty-five minutes. I met this group at a conference I attended in Leighton, and we're super excited to have another activity for kids and parents, and it's free once you get into the fair.
Questions for Ms. Wilson? We're looking forward to that fair beginning on the eleventh of August through and including the fourteenth of August, and thank you very much for doing a great job. You know, Commissioners, when Ms. Wilson first started the fair, our, because of her work, our attendance immediately jumped up twenty percent. Her second year was COVID, but yet the junior livestock program was the highest sales we've ever had at the Weber County Fair. And this year, I can tell you that Ms., with a lot of the direction from Ms. Wilson, our sponsorships are up nearly double than what they were three and four years ago, so I'm really happy with her work. So Commissioners, with that, are there any, if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion for item number H one.
Motion to approve action item H one.
Second.
Motion in a second. Heard and now place for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Ashton. Commissioner Farrar, you're up next with a request for approval of an interlocal agreement binding between Weber County and the Ogden City Redevelopment Agency for tax increment financing for the Ogden Airport project area. Commissioner Farrar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a, an agreement, tax increment financing for the airport project area that we've had discussions with Ogden City over the past several months. Just as a refresher, this agreement is a ninety-ten, so the tax increment would be ninety percent going to Ogden City with a cap of seventeen million over a twenty-five-year period of time. The contract is in your options under your agenda. If you have any additional questions, that's the, basically the short version. I did have a question for our counsel, if I might, before I go forward with the motion. Now, is this a resolution from, or a...
It should be. Under the interlocal agreement, if we're going to be sharing any type of tax revenue, there should be a resolution that is done in, that accompanies the approval of an interlocal agreement.
Okay, so you would do the resolution at some point in time?
Yeah, if it hasn't been submitted to you, I'll make sure that resolution gets to you. I'd just do the motion, the approval in the form of a resolution.
Okay, so I would make a motion, if you're ready for that, Mr. Chair, that we authorize our legal staff to prepare that resolution, but that, that that resolution not be recorded until such time as we receive additional information that's been requested by Ogden City to provide us as early as last February eighteenth. I believe we made a request for them to rescind some existing RDAs so we can clean up basically the contracts between Weber County and Ogden City. They've promised that, but I just want to make sure it's in the record that, that, and I want to make sure we understand that the trigger for this resolution that will be prepared is the recordation, not necessarily the action that takes place today. Is that...
Absolutely. We'll make sure that it's not...
Does that pass legal muster?
Right, we'll make sure that it doesn't, it's not signed until you get all the information that you, you want.
And then we'll, we'll make sure that somebody communicates that to Ogden City. So that's, that's my motion, Mr. Chair. I think we understand why.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second. I have a question for you, Mr. Crockett. Does this have a, then will we pass a resolution today? Are we just passing the interlocal agreement and the resolution will appear on the calendar another time? The resolution number, which would you prefer, which is, would appropriate?
I think you can go ahead and state a resolution number. We'll take that number and then we'll draft it, but we won't, we'll make sure that it's not signed until you get the information you want.
Yeah, it won't be, it won't be signed or recorded until we get that information back from Ogden City that basically closes down some of the existing RDAs that we requested back in February.
That's my motion.
Great, very good. Greg Brant, we welcome you to your full, your first full meeting today over there. We're glad to have you on the team as Ricky's trusted wingman, and so if you'd go ahead and assign this a resolution and then do a roll call vote, please.
Okay, resolution number would be twenty-eight dash two-zero-two-one.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Farrar?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
Chairman Harvey?
Aye.
Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Brant. Our next item, Commissioners, is a request for approval of a memorandum of understanding binding between Weber County and the Weber Human Services to utilize one case manager as a liaison between Weber Human Services and the Weber County Sheriff's Office. Chief Deputy Philip Reese, welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Nice to see you.
Very grateful to be part of an amazing commission meeting this morning. Really, congratulations, gentlemen.
Thanks.
I begin my presentation by giving thanks to Liam Kiyof and the county attorneys. He went over the memorandum of understanding and approved it legally. Ms. Keane with your commission office for making sure I was in the appropriate guidelines and the correct documentation. I appreciate her guidance very much. And finally, thanks to Ms. Wendy Davis Cox with Weber Human Services for her brainstorming of this task and her willingness to guide the memorandum of understanding through her organization. Ronald Reagan is quoted as saying, "By working together, pooling our resources and building our strengths, we can accomplish great things." That is exactly what this memorandum of understanding accomplishes, is an employee-sharing agreement that allows Weber Human Service, a Weber Human Service member to become part of the Weber County Sheriff's Office inmate case management team. This partnership will bring additional resources to the, to a county population that is in desperate need. The funds come from the justice, from the state justice services funding, so there is no actual county funding attached to it. If there's questions, I could answer for you, gentlemen, I would be very happy to do so.
Questions for Chief Deputy Reese? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Gaige's portfolio.
Your portfolio, Commissioner Farrar, if you'd like to make that motion.
I'd be happy to, if you'd like. So I would move to approve the memorandum of understanding binding between Weber County and the Weber Human Services to utilize one case manager as a liaison between the Weber Human Services and the Weber County Sheriff's Office, as presented today by Chief Deputy Philip Reese.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second? I'll place that motion for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, and thank you, Phil, for, for getting those community service workers out to help take care of sorely needed things here in the county with the fairgrounds and the shooting areas and, and the parks and ice sheet and everywhere else. We're fully in support of that, look forward to you doubling or tripling those efforts in the, in the future.
Quadrupling would be fantastic. I appreciate that.
Quadrupling would even be better.
Thank you very much.
Quintupling or sextupling would even, yeah.
Multiplying. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Great, thank you very much. All right, item I, India, is our commissioner comments. Commissioners, any comments before we close the meeting?
And Frye?
I do have one, Mr. Chair.
Please, go ahead, Commissioner Farrar.
You may or may not be aware, we had a little fire up in Ogden Valley over the hall, actually the twenty-fourth. And I just wanted to give a shout out to, first off, Eli from Emergency Management from the Sheriff's Office did a great job. The sheriff was on the road. I did speak to him during this event, but thank goodness we had air support from the Forest Service, the BLM, I believe was also because it was a BLM fire. It could have been a major disaster. It came close. It could have actually taken up to fifty homes. And if you look up there, you look at the photos, you can see how close that fire actually came to a number of homes. So unfortunately, it was a, an act that shouldn't have happened, it did, but it came from somebody target practicing. But again, the good news is that he stayed there and called nine-one-one when the fire started, or I believe we would have seen a different outcome by far. But I just wanted to thank our personnel for jumping on that, the Forest Service, BLM. Our local fire team was up there, making sure that the homes were as protected as they could, so in, in all a great effort that I think had a lot of people on edge during that event. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure they knew that we very much appreciated their efforts.
You know what? That's a great lesson there, too. I think positive things happen, even though it's tough to take responsibility for your actions when they're not necessarily so positive. Look at the positive things that came because a, a person with integrity decided to take responsibility for their actions.
Exactly.
I could, I can guarantee you, we would have lost some homes, I don't know how many, it would have gone another hour.
Oh, they were just within a hundred feet at that, maybe you're closer.
It would have been a different outcome.
Right, and Rick Cooper, who's the wild forestry captain up there and his group, all of them.
Rick Cooper, and, yep.
We appreciate very much. Thank you very much. With that then, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion for item J, Juliette, a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second?
We're adjourned.